Roll call please.
Trustee Lamb.
Here.
Trustee Orwork.
Here.
Trustee Peck. Trustee Rassich. Trustee Wajowski.
Here.
Trustee Benucci.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Let's rise for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're seeking a motion to appoint trustee Benucci as chair for this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb.
Yes.
Trustee Orwork.
Yes.
Trustee Rassich. Trustee Wajowski.
Yes.
Trustee Benucci.
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Presidential comments?
Thank you. At this time, we have several awards to be given out tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Conapek. So Chief?
Thank you. We do have several people that we want to highlight their accomplishments over the course of the last year and over recent projects. I'd first like to ask Eric Munson to come up to present this first award, and if I could get Andrew Hendon up here also, please.
Thank you, Chief. Andrew. Most of you know me as the Traffic Sergeant at the Plainfield Police Department, a role which I've held for the last eight years. I also take my knowledge in training outside the Village of Plainfield. I serve on the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police Traffic Safety Committee. And on that committee, I brought forth the idea with other committee members of taking what we do here rail safety-wise in the Village of Plainfield and taking it statewide. And in 2014, we created the first-ever Illinois Rail Safety Week. And in doing so, one of the things we did was to have visual aids for both ourselves as committee members and members of law enforcement and other entities to show where the railroads exist in the state of Illinois and to show what agencies and entities we were getting to participate. In order to do that, we tapped Andrew in the GIS department to create all the maps for our use. And on those maps, again, it highlighted all the rails throughout the state of Illinois. And then we would slowly highlight all the municipalities, villages, cities, et cetera, counties, state police districts that were signed up to participate. And it really showed us where we need to focus our efforts to encourage and solicit more participation from other agencies throughout the state. And without Andrew's help, we would never be able to do that. And we were able to put this map on the website and on the internet, making it available to all, for all to see. And I would ask Andrew to update the map, and I would have it updated within a matter of minutes. He would say, "I will work, you know, I'll stay late tonight. I'll work through my lunch. I'll get that map done as quickly as I can." So on behalf of the Illinois Associations of Chiefs of Police, I'm going to present Andrew with a distinguished service award, which reads, "For outstanding and dedicated service to the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police and its Traffic Safety Committee. The entire ring offer of your time and talents have set new standards for service to the association and its members. We recognize your commitment, professionalism, and hard work. You have represented the ILACP well and have contributed to the safety and well-being of all Illinois residents. Congratulations, Andrew."
Thank you very much.
Thank you. If I could have Mark Stafko come up, please. As many of you are aware, Mark Stafko was one of the instrumental people that really turned our Emergency Management Agency around. Back in 1999, 2000, there was a concerted effort to really make our Emergency Management Agency a lot more formidable and a lot more interactive with the different emergency groups in Plainfield and also throughout the region. Prior to Mark's arrival, we had two vehicles and five members. And as you know, today, we have numerous vehicles, and we have upwards of 25 volunteer members with our agency. Mark did this all on volunteer time as well. Mark actually was one of our deputy directors that assisted with the entire operation with Plainfield EMA. Well, Mark has decided to step down from EMA after 15 long years, so we wanted to basically congratulate Mark, first of all, and also thank Mark for all of your years of service with EMA. I don't have the exact number, but I can tell you, over those 15 years, Mark has literally volunteered thousands of man-hours, of Mark-hours, if you will, to EMA, helping this community, first of all, to make sure we're as well-prepared as can be. But in the event we did have an emergency or an actual disaster, which unfortunately in Mark's 15 years, I think we had two or three, that we could recover from them as quickly as possible. So Mark, we put this plaque together for you, and basically it says, "An appreciation of your 15 years of dedicated service to the community as a Plainfield Emergency Management Agency volunteer." Congratulations, Mark.
Excuse me, Chief. Chief, before, excuse me, Mark, one second. Not only has this man produced a tremendous amount of good for this community, but he also has two children, Matt and Stacy, who are very active in this organization right now, and they're in attendance this evening. And it's not only an honor, as I spoke to them earlier, not only is it an honor for this man, but it's an honor for those young people to have this individual as a father and a guidance figure. He's been tremendous for the Village of Plainfield. He's been tremendous for his family, and he's quite an honorable situation. I'm really happy to be able to shake your hand in a second. You're a good man.
And I'd just like to add, if it wasn't for Matt and Stacy, Mark probably wouldn't have shown up tonight because he's just that kind of guy, so. And lastly, I'd like to highlight three of the main awards we presented at our Police Department Annual Award Ceremony last week. If I could get Deb Abbott, Jason Kopeck, and Jen Myers up, please. Aside from all the commendations and honorable mentions and other special recognitions that we do present at our award ceremony, the three main awards that are actually voted on by the officers and personnel of the Police Department are the Civilian of the Year, Officer of the Year, and Supervisor of the Year for 2014. So I'd just like to read real briefly what put these folks in this position in order for them to be awarded. First of all, Deb Abbott, who's our Civilian of the Year. Deb started with the Plainfield Police Department in June 2007 as the department's Associate Prosecutor. In her role as Associate Prosecutor, Deb oversees the preparation of the village's local cases for prosecution, including those heard in the village's branch court and on the various misdemeanor traffic calls at the Will County Courthouse. Over the past eight years, Deb has willingly assumed this responsibility and diligently represented the village in its local prosecutions. Deb exercises exceptional judgment in prosecuting these matters while working independently and with an unmatched level of attention and persistence. Deb's work product is excellent, and she always strives to perform at her best. As a result, Deb has successfully led the prosecution of hundreds of cases each month on behalf of the village. In addition to her dedication to the courtroom, Deb works cooperatively with village staff, including members of the Court's Division, Records Unit, and all other sworn and non-s sworn personnel. She graciously guides them through their required court appearances, provides legal updates, and assists in providing all of the services generated by the Court Division. Deb performs each of these responsibilities with diligence, attention to detail, and enthusiasm. This award recognizes a civilian employee whose service to the Police Department is respected and admired by his or her coworkers, and Deb is well-deserving a recipient of this award. Deb has shown unwavering dedication to her role as Associate Prosecutor, and through her tenure as the village's Associate Prosecutor, Deb has proven herself to be a competent prosecutor and dedicated employee and deserving of recognition as 2014 Civilian Employee of the Year. Deb Abbott. And Sergeant Jen Myers is our Supervisor of the Year. Jen is the recipient of the Plainfield Police Department 2014 Supervisor of the Year. This award recognizes a supervisor whose service to both the department and the village is exceptional and professional. The men and women of the Police Department nominate the supervisor considered worthy of this highest recognition. Sergeant Jen Myers started working with the Plainfield Police Department in April of 2003. In February 2011, Sergeant Myers was placed in charge of the department's Record Unit and also took on the CALIA manager's responsibilities, essentially doing the job of two previous employees. In 2014, Sergeant Myers oversaw and coordinated several major jobs throughout the year, which included, but were not limited to, training two new employees in records, maintaining and updating department policies and procedures to stay in compliance with the CALIA standards, helping to launch the Premier One switch-over even though the software has posed many difficult challenges, transitioning department policies and procedures onto Power DMS, which included over 400 files for easier access, ensuring that the department is in compliance with the Secretary of State's destruction of files, maintaining sex and violent offender registrations, and to name a few others on her to-do list. Additionally, staff members described Sergeant Myers as fair, easy to work with, and a competent supervisor that sometimes has a thankless behind-the-scenes job. Sergeant Myers has had to learn many new tasks and jobs on her own, though through self-learning and networking with other agencies. Over the past few years, Sergeant Myers has worked very hard on ensuring the department members stay focused on reaccreditation, policies and procedures, and records management. There has been no small feat, and it is because of Sergeant Myers' leadership and her dedicated commitment to the department and its members. Sergeant Myers has shown dedication, integrity, and pride to her peers, management, and the village of Plainfield, and she sets an admirable example for all members of the department. Jen Myers, our 2014 Supervisor of the Year. And our Officer of the Year for 2014 is Officer Jason Kopeck. Jason was hired as a police officer with the village on March 25, 1992. During his 23 years of service with the village, Officer Kopeck has worked in several different capacities. Although most of his tenure has been spent as a patrol officer, Officer Kopeck has also been assigned as a detective and as a traffic officer. Most recently, Officer Kopeck was selected as a new school resource officer for Plainfield Central High School. Officer Kopeck has several collateral responsibilities within the Police Department, some of which include evidence technician, field training officer, juvenile officer, traffic accident reconstructionist, and truck enforcement officer. He is also a member of the Police Department's Police Honor Guard Team. During his career, Officer Kopeck has received several department awards and letters of recognition for his level of, for the level of work he has performed. One of the most notable awards Officer Kopeck received was in 2006, received the Officer of the Year Award. He is the first two-time recipient of the Officer of the Year with our department. In the last several years, including 2014, Officer Kopeck's supervisors have appointed him as a shifts officer in charge because of his leadership skills and sound decision-making abilities. Officer Kopeck is described by his peers as a very knowledgeable and professional officer who is always willing to help others. Lastly, Officer Kopeck has also been identified as a mentor to several younger officers who oftentimes look to him for advice during difficult, intense situations. Last thing I will say on Jason, on a personal note, and I made this joke at the award ceremony, is Jason was my field training officer, so if you ever have a problem with me, you know who to look for to blame, so. I would like to present Jason Kopeck as our 2014 Officer of the Year.
We're seeking board consideration of a motion to approve the reappointments of Michael Bordle as chairman and Suzanne Derrick as vice chair to the Historical Preservation Commission, with the terms expiring April 30, 2016. The motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Orwork?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries.
I just wanted to make a couple more comments about our wonderful recipients here. You know, at a time when the police departments are really taking a hit, we're very, very proud of our department, our officers, throughout all this, all the civilian staff that work with them, all the law officers, the legal staff, everyone. And I really want to say congratulations, and I can say personally, I'm very proud. I go to those awards every year, and I'm always very proud of the people that are in that room time and time again. And so we have an outstanding force, so thank you, Chief.
Trustees' comments?
I'd like to say thank you, Chief, and for you, your leadership with your personnel. It is a hard job. They take a lot of time away from their families to be dedicated to the people of the community. And it's nice to see the children here. They bring their children to accept these awards. I know on a personal level, I've seen some of them in action, and they're very, very good, good people.
Are there any other trustee comments?
A couple. Follow-up on this. We'll get to the operations report later, but year to year, things are getting better in Plainfield from a police safety point of view, and fewer offenses and so on. So as Marjorie was saying, you're doing a great job, and Plainfield is benefiting from that. The other question I have is a follow-up of one that I raised a couple months ago. A lot of interest in the snow removal, you know, the February event, and what are we going to do about next year? If we can update it, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, trustee Lamb. As the mayor and several other of the trustees have expressed concerns about the blizzard this last February and improving service levels related to it too, as well. And just to give the board a brief update, we've already started some of that process, and I apologize if I haven't brought that out more clearly. But in essence, the salt purchase that we had two weeks ago was additional salt that was needed. I also had noted that we have reserved 4,000 tons of salt with the option to buy 5,000 tons. So we will have the option next year to buy 5,500 tons of salt, whereas last year, we purchased 3,000 tons of salt. So there'll be additional salt that'll be purchased through this process. The board also authorized the purchase of two new trucks over the past six months. One of the trucks has recently come in, so we've got a new truck for next year's snow removal team. And we'll have a new truck in before the next snow season starts, so that'll help additionally. Another creative idea, there's several different ways, we believe, to attack this situation and help in the future, is an intergovernmental agreement with both of the townships. Now, we have IGAs with our big cities, Naperville, Aurora, and many of the others for these major events like tornadoes and floods and things like that. But it made good sense to have an IGA with the townships. They actually have more equipment and people per mile than we do, and they finish their snow removal work earlier than we did. This is an item that doesn't cost the taxpayer any more money. And Mr. Harvey and I have actually drafted the IGA for both Wheatland and Plainfield Township. It has to be approved by their board, and then it'll come back to our board for approval. The benefit for the township is they have other pieces of equipment, or we have other pieces of equipment that they don't have, such as a personnel lift truck that we utilize to change banners, street sweepers. We have two street sweepers, and the townships currently don't. Two backhoes and loaders, things like that, that they can utilize on an almost daily basis when we're not utilizing them as kind of a quid pro quo in exchange for services. Again, it doesn't cost the taxpayer any additional money, but it is a plan for next year to address the winter weather, too. Last but not least, stronger contracts with our contractors to make sure that they perform in the way that they should perform. And those are the items that are coming forward. They will come forward in bits and pieces. We see the IGAs. We already talked about the salt. We've talked about the equipment. I'll let the board know when the equipment comes in. The IGAs will be before you. We anticipate next month, and I'll talk about that a little bit. And last but not least, towards the end of the summer, we'll have the new contracts before the board. So we could have a committee of the whole where we could wrap this together and talk about last year and talk about the coming year, too, as well, if that's a board discretion. Or I will give you a regular update as each one of these items come up. Or I can, of course, do both, too, as well. It's whatever the board's discretion is. So I hope that answers the question, and it answers the questions of some of our residents out there as to what we are doing and what we are going to do for next year.
I do think that, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, I do think that's the plan, to have that on the future cow. I think that's the mayor's plan.
Thank you for bringing that up, Ellen. I think some information I'd like to see presented at the future cow. I know this is not an agenda item tonight, so I don't want to get granular with it. But one request that I did make was that if it was possible to have in our RFP in the future, there's a penalty for those contractors if they don't show up in X amount of time when they're called to be deployed. In addition, if we can also have an analysis of the cost savings measures that I believe we took, I believe we started about five or six years ago of doing cul-de-sacs last. And if we can actually reevaluate and see if that's actually in the best interests of the community and if we want to continue that procedure moving forward. So those are the two items that I'm interested in as far as snow removal to be brought up at the cow and to have that information available to the board for discussion.
Well, also interested to see if it's possible, an after-action report on what went well and what went wrong. Some things were done correct, and some things were done incorrect. And to combine them both, and maybe at a future committee of the whole, it'd be nice to see the things that went well that we can try to duplicate in different areas, and the things that went wrong that we can try to rectify. Thank you.
I certainly appreciate the update. Ellen, I guess my comments would be, is I understand that things are going to be coming in in pieces, and I guess maybe I would like to hold off maybe on the cow until we had the final pieces all together so that we can review it and say, you know what, this really works for next year, and we do have the plan that we all agree is going to take us forward to 2015, 16. And then as far as we're talking about cul-de-sacs and stuff, I'm not sure what the existing policy is, so I'll just throw it out there. Maybe it's already going on, but has there ever been a consideration about maybe rotating? So some residents don't feel like, hey, my streak gets done last all the time. In other words, you know, this section goes first this week, next snow, this section goes first, you know, that kind of stuff. So thank you very much for the update.
You know, one comment I'd like to make, so often, when you're involved in a project, involved in a community event, for example, I know Administrator Murphy and I and others on this board spoke of, I'll have my assistant hold the sign, the big surf, okay. Anyway, I was remiss, I was remiss, and I think the entire community was remiss. I heard so little about this. The mail carriers' food drive Saturday to benefit the Plainfield area Interfaith Food Pantry. I spoke with our own personal mail carrier, and I said, "Was it a big success?" Everybody always goes into their pantry and takes out things, put them out. He said they raised over 7,000 pounds of food for the food pantry. And so this is another illustration, one last time, of the mail carriers. The mail carriers doing a good job doing a community service, and a lot of times, we don't even recognize. I, we recognize it, but we just assume that everybody is doing something. And they just did a great job, and it was, it was a quiet situation, but it was another effort to improve the Village of Plainfield and to help people. And you really have to give them, when you see your mail carrier, say to them, "Thank you."
Are there any other trustee comments? Now, this will be time for public comments, not to exceed three to five minutes. There are no public comments, then we'll proceed with the business meeting. We're seeking a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Orwork?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. We're seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda to include minutes of the board meeting held on May 4th, bills paid and bills payable reports for May 18th, cash and investments, revenue and expenditure reports for April, approval of the GIS annual maintenance agreement with ESRI in the amount of $9,600, and approval of the Laserfish annual maintenance agreement with TKB Associates in the amount of $7,586.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve items A through E under the consent agenda. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Orwork?
Yes.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rassich? Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Kensington Center South sign variance. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3213, granting approval of a sign variance to permit three additional monument signs at the development commonly known as Kensington Center South, located at the southwest corner of Route 59 and 127th Street.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3213, granting approval of a sign variance to permit three additional monument signs at the development commonly known as Kensington Center South, located at the southwest corner of Route 59 and 127th Street.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I guess I would just like to reiterate my concerns that I don't believe that the size of the sign panels for the Route 59 is going to help the intended business, the small business shops in the rear. I think, you know, we needed additional conversations or talks with Target to see if we couldn't come up with a better solution.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to adopt ordinance number 3213, granting approval of a sign variance for Kensington Center South. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee Orwork?
No.
Trustee Peck? Trustee Rassich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Benucci?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries, 5-1. Next item on the agenda is text amendment, religious assembly. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance requiring religious assemblies to obtain a special permit in the B1 and B3 commercial districts.
So moved.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions on this item?
Just to clarify a little bit, Mr. Harvey's letter basically says, hard, we'd have to show, to turn down a religious use in these areas, we'd have to show damage to the neighbors. The onus is on us to do that. What we're doing here is to really get a review at the board level to understand the situation. Doesn't make it easy for us to turn things down. We may not want to, but on the other hand, we'll have a much better view of what is happening to our town and can make comments as we see fit. Is that correct?
Can we comment?
Yeah, I think, just to sort of summarize it, the difference between religious institutions and other businesses is that religious institutions have certain statutory and constitutional protections that, for instance, a gas station wouldn't. And I highlighted the Chicago Heights case to show you what our Illinois Supreme Court looked at in terms of a special use. And just because you have a special use, that doesn't mean that it doesn't fit in that category. It just may mean that there's certain conditions, stipulations, that, that, you know, the board may, based on the evidence, based on the situation, in terms of how it fits in, the particular operation may need, you know, some special consideration. It doesn't mean that it can be denied with, you know, no consequence, and that's, and that's the difference. I mean, those special uses still, and this goes even beyond religious institutions, special uses by the fact that they're in our ordinance in a certain category, be it- uses by the fact that they're in our ordinance in a certain category, be it B1, B3, it's a legislative finding by you folks that they fit in those categories. It just means because of the nature of that particular use, instead of just getting, you know, a building permit, they have to go through the public hearing process to determine the impacts and other factors that are in our ordinance as to their particular operation. And just be in mind that, and it's still evolving, that, you know, there's federal and constitutional protections for religious institutions that you just don't have with other businesses. And that's, you know, we'd be remiss, I think, if we didn't point that out. It's not to say that you don't have the legislative prerogative to determine, you know, that a particular use becomes a special use versus a permitted use. It's just making you aware of the consequences, you know, of doing that, and if they're turned down, they have protections and rights that other businesses would not have.
Well, let me just ask one question. Do you support us putting an ordinance to have the review, recognizing that we have limitations in what we can do? Or would you prefer we don't have this particular ordinance?
You know, I mean, very frankly, it's a policy decision, it's, you know, it's a legislative decision. I mean, while I tried to focus on, you know, probably the key case in Illinois dealing with this and the Chicago Heights matter, I mean, it's, you're the elected officials, you're the fiduciaries, so I mean, it's a legislative decision, not a legal decision. Obviously, you know, there's more consequences, you know, when you have a special use because you have the right, you know, to turn it down. Right now, you know, if everything else is being met, it doesn't even come to the board. But I can't sort of say, you know, that that shouldn't be your prerogative. You know, we still have to follow the law, whether it's a special use or we legislate a certain use in a category. I'm just saying there's consequences. So, I mean, in terms of preference, you know, at the end of the day, it's your determination. I'm just laying out the consequences.
Consequences, I make sure I understand. Consequences if we deny it, and no consequences if we ask for review. Okay? I guess I support the review because then the public can just understand what's happening. That's one good thing about the village board, you know, we surface things so people understand. And we can ask questions and for clarity. And if there are issues around traffic and so on, I mean, there's a Las Cathedral out in California, if they tried to do that in Plainfield, it wouldn't fit. We might argue that we want to deny that one. But I think just playing the review process could be productive, recognizing our hands are tied if we're gonna try to turn it down, but I think the public will gain something from the discussion that we have, my personal opinion, so I would support this particular motion.
I guess I have a question or just maybe a comment is for clarity, so just, the way I understand it, this is not gonna be a motion or a vote against religious assembly, it's really just adding a layer of review when a petitioner comes forward and wants to go into a specific site or specific building that happens to be a religious assembly, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, it's just, right now, in those B categories, they're just absolute permitted uses, there's no public hearing, there's no notice, but if that amendment is adopted, there would be. You know, it, there are still permitted uses in those categories. They're just special uses which, you know, you know, you might have certain conditions or things, whether it's buffering, I mean, there's, you know, it's hard to paint a broad brush because you can have all sorts of different operations in terms of religious institutions. Some could be quite small, some could be quite large. I mean, you know, you still are gonna focus on the same things you would whether they were religious institutions or, you know, they were retail operations in terms of traffic and those kinds of things and in those planning factors that you look into, no matter what's going in there.
And I guess, just for the record, I guess I obviously like to say that I support religious assemblies, and I believe that they add a huge benefit to our community. I think, as Mr. Radich pointed out earlier with the big surf, I think that was initiated by a couple of churches in our community, so. Thank you.
I guess just a point of clarification for the public, and I'm sure the board is aware, this is simply seeking a motion to instruct our village attorney to draft this ordinance. We're not actually voting on the text amendment tonight, and this will allow the board, then, to review it and see if we have any objections to it and actually vote and ratify at a later date, correct?
That's correct, Trustee Peck. This is just to see if you want to go forward, because this came from, as you know, the Plan Commission, and it came to you, but ultimately, it's a legislative decision whether you want to amend your current legislation, so that's exactly true.
I'd definitely like to see this drafted.
Are there any other comments or questions? That motion was made and seconded to direct the village attorney to draft an ordinance requiring religious assemblies to obtain a special permit in the B1 and B3 commercial districts. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Winehold Southeastern Corner of Plainfield Naperville Road at 127th Street.
Yes, this is really more of a housekeeping matter. As you recall, last year, as part of the Winehold request for rezoning, we're talking about the actual farmstead at the southeast corner of 127th Street and Naperville Road. The applicant last year did request that the property be rezoned to B3 in accordance with the original annexation agreement, which dates back to 1994. The board did approve the rezoning of the Winehold Farmstead last year to B3. Subsequently to that fact, we were advised by the Will County Recorders Office that the original legal description that was incorporated in the original annexation agreement back in 94 was incorrect, and therefore, the original farmstead property is not, was not, or is not in the village of Plainfield. Based on that fact, we, of course, we had no legal basis to rezone the property if the property was not in the village of Plainfield. There was extensive discussions with the Recorders Office, but we thought perhaps it just made more sense to simply annex the property, because the property surrounded by the village of Plainfield, the owner of the property clearly wants to be in the village. I think the board did support the rezoning and annexation last year. It was obviously original, consistent with the original annexation agreement, which expired in 2014, but nevertheless, we wanted to bring this back to the village board for reconsideration for an actual annexation with the right legal description and with the rezoning of the property to B3. There is no annexation, therefore, this would be straight B3 zoning. Any future development on this property would be reviewed by the village board at a future date with respect to site plan or even a demolition of those structures. The village board would have an opportunity to review those proposals again, but this, again, is just kind of reiterating what you approved last year as it relates to the requested annexation and B3 zoning. So, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Quick questions, Michael. The property across the street, the barns and so on, Woody also owns those.
That's correct.
Those are annexed, though?
That's correct. That legal description was correct.
The only thing we missed was the farmstead and what you're trying to...
Yes, that's exactly right.
The property's for sale now, does he tend to sell the house as well? Sell the whole lot or not?
I believe there's, correct, there's some discussions to sell the house. I'm not, based on my last understanding, there was, I'm not sure if they had a contract, but they were in discussions with a prospective purchaser for a contract for the farmstead itself, not the barns. The barns are actually being used right now for storage.
Yeah, for his business, okay. But so, they would probably sell the whole lot and then develop that, and that's what'll come to us.
Correct.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, we're seeking a motion to adopt ordinance number 3214 annexing the southeastern corner of Plainfield Naperville Road and 127th Street into the village of Plainfield.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries. We're seeking board consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance number 3215 rezoning the southeastern corner of Plainfield Naperville Road at 127th to B3.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Just to clarify, there's two items. Are there any type of public hearing requirements that were met in the past that we don't have to go through again to...
No, because there is no proposed annexation. As you know, we usually have a public hearing for the annexation agreement, but this is a straight annexation, which doesn't require a public hearing. There was a public hearing for the rezoning at the Plan Commission.
Administrators' report?
No report.
Management Services' report?
No report.
Engineers' report?
No report.
Planning Department' report?
No report.
Building Department' report?
No report tonight.
Public Works' report?
No report.
Police Chiefs' report?
Thank you. The first item I have up is I'm seeking board approval to purchase 1,000 Midland NOAA, which is National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association Weather Alerting Radios through Walgreens store for the cost of $22,000. As you're aware, in this budget that just started, we are, through the Plainfield Emergency Management Agency, we're looking to do a weather radio discount program for the residents of the village where we purchase the radios for $22, and then we turn around and sell them to the residents for $10 in an effort to try to get as much severe weather alerting technology out there to the residents. These tornado sirens are still a very viable warning system for the severe weather that comes into town, but as we've seen with recent storms and over the last several years, they do have their limitations, especially with the way houses are being built these days. There's a good possibility that if you're in your house and you're somewhat removed from a tornado siren or a warning siren, you may not hear that warning. So, we are trying to offer these weather alerting radios so that ultimately, our goal would try to, would be to try to get one of these weather radios into every residence in the community so they could receive direct and timely notices from the National Weather Service when some type of severe weather, either watch or warning, is issued, whether it's a severe thunderstorm, tornado, winter storm, or flood, or anything along those lines. We've worked in conjunction with Midland Radio and also Walgreens, who offers this program, and again, they're willing to sell us the radios at a discounted price. Typically, these radios are $25 plus, so they're selling them to us at a discounted price of $22. We are looking to move this, if approved tonight, we would be looking to move this program forward in the months of June, July, and August where we would have select days set up where the residents could come to the police department and purchase these radios for that discounted price of $10. And on site, when that's happening, we actually have people that would program the radios for them and have them ready to go for them. So, I am seeking board's approval to authorize the purchase of 1,000 Midland Weather Alerting Radios from Walgreens in the amount of $22,000.
Chief, I have a question. Is that gonna be enough? I mean, obviously, it's not enough for all the households, but do you foresee, like, a rush of people looking for these?
Well, I'm hoping that we do have a rush. This year, we've never done this before, so I wanted to temper it. We have roughly, and Michael could probably give me the exact figure, but we have roughly about 9,000 residents or houses in the village of Plainfield. So, again, since we've never done this program before, I kind of wanted to temper it the first year and see how the program went. I'm hoping that we go through 1,000 radios very quickly and then, over the next couple of years, that we present this program again, and ultimately, over a multi-year period, we're able to outfit every house in the village of Plainfield with these radios.
Chief, have they looked at the applications for the smartphones as well, on the, for the NOAA? I believe they have an app for both Android and Apple.
We have looked at that. There's actually multiple applications out there technology-wise. What we found, though, is two things. Number one, believe it or not, there's actually some people that don't have that type of technology. They don't have the smartphones, they don't have the pads or any of that type of stuff for whatever reason, so that kind of reduces their ability to get those alerts. So, that's where the weather alerting radios would kind of pick up that void. And secondly, there's some people that, even though they may have the smartphones and that, and I'll be honest with you, I'm on that list, they may not understand all the technology on those phones. So, we do try to get the word out through social media and just through our interaction at different community events as far as these apps, but we know that we're not hitting the entire target population of our village, so we're hoping that this type of program would fill that void.
You know, I'm in perfect agreement. This type of program would fill the void. Oftentimes, if you do have a smartphone or a dumb phone, either way, you turn it off at night, perhaps. It, you know, you lose the effectiveness of the technology. I think this is an excellent idea, and I would like to, I would like to make the motion that the village board direct the president to authorize the purchase of 1,000 Midland NOAA Weather Alerting Radios through Walgreens stores in the amount of $22,000.
Second.
I have another question, chief, before we vote. Have we done any analysis on the potential participation that we'll actually have in this program? Have we done a, like, a $200 or $300 robocall to residents, maybe in a certain age bracket within the village, or how we know that they're gonna utilize this program? I guess what I don't want to see is six or 700 of these in storage in another year or two and have us say, maybe we should've bought 500.
You're absolutely right. That was my concern. Just to give you a little background, where I picked up this program as, from, is another community near us actually did this program last summer, and they're a smaller community. I want to say their population is roughly 15,000 to 18,000. They purchased 800 Weather Alerting Radios, and they had it set up the same way we're looking to do it, where we have two days a month, June, July, and August. By the time they got to the end of their days in July, they were out of their radios already, so that's how popular program was in their community. And so, I raised the stakes a little bit, if you will, with 1,000, but then again, our population versus that community's population is well beyond that exponentially, so I have not done any type of analysis in our town itself, but based on the positive results that they have, I'm hoping it will carry over to ours.
It sounds like you feel comfortable with this number. Are there gonna be, are there gonna be any limitations on who can purchase these? Can residents outside the village show up and purchase these, or do they need identification to show they live?
It will be limited strictly to the residents of the village of Plainfield. They will have to show some type of identification. We are gonna put, if approved, we are gonna put a notice out on the water bill, so that's one of the identifications that they can bring, is just bring the copy of their water bill in, but obviously, we'll take driver's licenses, things like that, but they will have to be a resident of the village of Plainfield.
Excellent. I think it's a great idea, and I think the water bill's a good way to advertise, or maybe something in the village voice, too, if we can have our marketing department work on that. Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm in full agreement with Trustee Peck when he stated that we don't want to be stuck with a lot of radios, devices in this capacity, but in light of what has occurred in the Midwest in this past week, I think an awful lot of people are gonna be standing in line in order to buy one of those. Simply, there's this area, this particular area, the Midwest in particular, you look at what's happening, seven or eight, 10 tornadoes a day. I can't wait till you do sell those, because I have every intention of buying one. Thank you for bringing this program to the village of Plainfield. Appreciate it.
You know, one of the other things that you've been actively trying to do is to get people to realize the sirens outside are predominantly for outside use, to get them used to having some kind of technology in their household or some way inside their home that they can hear it so they're not totally trying to rely on a siren they may or may not hear when the TV's on in their house. So, I don't think you're gonna have trouble getting people to take them. My concern was it wouldn't be enough, because I've seen the interest in these, so. And Tom Skilling promotes them, so, hey, you know, you know how that works, so, thank you, chief.
If this is a wildly successful program, and we do advertise it in the water bills, say we are out by June, do you have any contingencies that you can come back before the board in an agreement with Walgreens and say, hey, look, if we sell this, or we get rid of this many, there is a demand that we can expand it?
I could work with the village administrator and Tracy and see if we have some other funding sources that may be available.
Are there any other comments or questions? Now, the motion was made and seconded to authorize the purchase of the Weather Alerting Radios from Walgreens in the amount of $22,000. Trustee Lamb?
Yes.
Trustee O'Rourke?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Trustee Rasich?
Yes.
Trustee Wajowski?[1760.65]
Yes.
Trustee Bonucci?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Thank you. And the other item I have is the police department, police department's operation report for April. One amendment I would like to point out, on the bottom of page 5, under the code enforcement section, the number of snipe signs that were removed last month is incorrect, that should be 268. Other than that, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
One question on the training, usually it's on one page and usually maybe a single officer per item. It looks to me like you got 15 per item in some cases, so a very heavy month on training, unusually heavy?
It wasn't unusually busy month on training, the nice thing is, the vast majority is, the ones where you see maybe 10, 12 officers under a title, that was all in-house training we provided for our officers, so they didn't have to travel anywhere. And actually, some of these cases, our officers, myself plus other officers, actually provided the training to our other personnel, so we were able to basically get the best bang for our buck. And some of these other ones, we were able to bring instructors to our police department free of charge and they put on the training. So, we got a lot out of the month of April as far as training, but it was very cost-effective and very timely as far as some of the topics.
I applaud you for the effort because obviously it's paying off in the results if you, as I mentioned earlier, year to year to year, things continue to get better and training is a great way of continuing the progress, so, thank you.
Thank you. Just the last thing I'd just like to mention to the public that's watching, just be aware this weekend, we do have a couple significant special events going on, so there will be some road interruptions and road closures. Saturday is our Wounded Warrior 5K, right outside the village hall here, early Saturday morning, and then Sun, not Sunday, but Monday on Memorial Day, we'll be having the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony, also outside our village hall by the monuments, so there will be some significant road closures and road impacts during those time periods. Thank you very much.
Attorney's report?
No report this evening, thank you.